Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Committee of the Whole Meeting for October 16th, 2024. We'll call this meeting to order. First item of business is to consider the minutes of the September 18th, 2024 meeting.
I move for approval.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That sounded unanimous to me, so the minutes are approved. We'll move on to the Council Administrator's report. Ms. Kidd?
Good afternoon, councilors. I will begin, and you should have this report before you. And the Department of Budget update, you do have that in your packet. And we are, as you know, we're into the second quarter, so you are looking at your first quarter performance overall or year-to-date. And so most spending is at its 25% or less target. Other areas could be more depending on what you advised us to do. The district budgets also have been provided to each of you with a copy of your district budget with your account balances as of today. Now getting into the meat. Oh, and may I also add that as you review that with your staff, certainly if you have questions, you could see Jeff or myself or Connie or Felicia Jolly. You should have before you a packet that looks like this. This is the renovation quotes that I have prepared or has been prepared for you. I believe all quotes are in, and let's go through this packet and then I'll jump back to the reports, just so you could have an idea. The first item that is before you is the quote for the credenza that will be located in Conference Room A under the video conferencing TV. And you can see the schematics of that on the third page of this. The next quote is going to be for the seat cushions and the 16-fabriced, fabric tracked wall panels that will be put here in the chamber. And if you go through that, you can also see it is going to be the last page of that quote, not the last page of it, but you will see chambers. You first will see some blue fabric. That is going to be the fabric selection for Conference Room A curtains. I'm at this sheet. The next fabric that you see will be for the wall panel fabric and the bench fabric. Now, this next area that you will observe is what we are calling the intern area, but it's additional seating for any district staff or if there is a need for staff, for central staff in the future. And you can see the cost of that as well as an iteration of what that area will look like if you would travel to the last page of this submission. The area where the file cabinets are located presently in central staff. The last page. And as you can see, there are two options. The one at the top has two tables with four chairs, and the one at the bottom has a high-low kind of iteration, so there could be guidance on that if you all prefer. But the quote is in the packet right before that.
Ms. Kidd, so that will allow for eight seats? Okay, just making sure I'm interpreting that correctly.
Yes, and what this will look like is, the idea was just try to maximize the space, and those, the desktops will have electrical outlets where you could sit with a laptop, your phone, and so forth, something just for an in-and-out or maybe not so much a permanent employee, but a consultant, an intern, or a part-time person, or maybe a full-time if they're very efficient with their space. Yes, exactly, exactly.
Yes.
So how many months out of the year are we going to have these interns?
Well, I don't know. I'm not doing it for this administration. We're doing it looking forward also. We have more staff than we've had in 22 years now, as you may know. So I'm just trying to maximize the area. Right now, there is only one space that could be accommodated back in the back, and what kind of gave us the idea is that the file cabinets were not being used in all instances. Most offices are going to a digital platform, and we were expecting eight interns from Birmingham Promise, and we could not accommodate eight. And so we have a few that come back, and then we'll send them in Conference Room A. But this is something that we felt like could be for future use for maximizing the space.
And the storage in our file cabinets is going to be located where?
We're moving the file cabinets. We're redistributing the file cabinets throughout the city, who usually send them to the warehouse. I think we're going to retain two, one in the copier area, and we're trying to see if we can retain two up front. All the content that is located in the existing files, we have them labeled for each office to review the content, and we do have two places that we can put those. We can put those in off-site storage, which is just down the street, or if they are original documents and meet the qualification, to go to permanent archives. We will do that for the offices also.
Okay, and if we want them to be in the building where we can get at them, where will they be kept?
We would make that determination about how many people want them in the files to see, because there are some office files cabinet tree that is not being used. We are retaining, as I said, file cabinet right in the back, right by the window, just as you're coming up the landing, to get into the central staff area. If you keep walking straight and not turn, you're walking to the file cabinet. We have that one. And then there is also the cabinet that we lay the agendas on, that we remove stuff from there. There is a file cabinet in the area, not a file cabinet, but a storage area where Alicia sits, that we will have for additional filing also.
Okay, good, thank you. And just one other question. When are we getting the bigger table for our Conference Room A?
I had put that question to the President. What we did initially was we ordered a 10-chair table, and we got it. But it does look tight to me. But as we check back with the vendors, some vendors will allow us to return items and just charge us a restocking fee. This vendor will not. We would have to buy a longer table and then repurpose that tabletop throughout the city to see, and usually other departments do want what we are giving away. But I did not want to make that decision, given that I would have to purchase another tabletop, and it's about $4,000.
How much should we spend on the one we have?
The same amount. It'd be the same table, just a little bit longer.
I'm open to suggestions.
Well, first, we ought to find how we got something that small for the room and have a duck, and then after we do that, I think it needs to be a bigger table. I mean, anybody with a measuring tape could see that that was too small for the room.
Well, I also would like for you to-
But it's ours now, and so since it's ours, we just, I guess, you know, it's just so depressing to be so wasteful, but I don't know, I don't know how to fix it. You can't get an extension for it or anything, I don't think.
Well, I think that idea was floated, but I guess, Ms. Kidd, that-
Yes, it was. It certainly was loaded. We have always tried to work to the greater efficiency of the city's money. That has always been my goal. And the table was measured, but we asked for a table for 10 seats, and that is what was done. And we were also trying to accommodate space in the north side of the room that would be a place for you all to have interviews. So we didn't want anything oversized because it would run into that area, but the table to me does seem small. And as I said before, certainly we would pay for it, but that property is the city property and would be used within the city. The things that leave out of our office before it leaves, it never makes it to the warehouse. Somebody else in the city needs what we have, and so it's automatically go into use.
And that should tell us that the things we get rid of shouldn't be gotten rid of, I guess.
Office furniture.
If everybody wants our stuff, we must be giving away perfectly good things.
In some instances.
Question, so along with the treatment, window treatments and things in Conference Room A, are we still going to move forward with revamping the northwest corner of Conference Room A for our sort of walk, step and repeat area?
As a matter of fact, the scope of services is to have a wall. This was the idea of Alicia out of the PIO team. I use them to give, you know, I don't do it by myself. So that wall is going to have, will have a painted background on it, and then have overhead lightings, track lightings, that we will get to set it up, such as that.
Okay.
And hopefully, one day, you guys will want to do podcasts, and we might be able to buy microphones for that. But that's later.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Well, I will just point out that in our budget request for the current fiscal year, if we get to an amendment, we did request additional positions. We still have a couple of positions that are vacant, but we assume that those are going to be filled at some point. So with regard to making space for additional employees, that was one of the considerations as well, is that, you know, at some point, we are anticipating that we'll have two additional employees, and we've requested some additional positions. So it's part of the thought, long-term, to making additional space.
Making space? You're talking to a person who has a degree in interior design and almost got one in architecture, and you don't make space.
Better utilization of the space.
You know, we have a finite amount of space. The mayor probably isn't going to give us any of his space. We don't have sky hooks. You know, the thought that we would hire people and not give them any place to operate seems short-sighted, but it's just a thought. But making space, I mean, we've already made all the space we can in here. There's no additional places to build anything unless we have really tiny people.
I was just explaining the thought process behind repurposing the file cabinet area. Okay, do we have any additional questions regarding capital improvements for administrative kid?
Just one on a page. The page with the blue fabrics?
Yes, ma'am.
Which one are we using? Do we pick one?
I have not picked one. That could be, if you want to pick one, I'm good with anybody picking. These were the iterations that she gave. She first was going with a beige, but we requested that the Conference Room A be painted, and you know, there's some water that gets in around the window seals, so we are requesting that they be repaired in Conference Room A as well as in the central staff area. I think it's two windows. Well, all of the windows probably need to be resealed. Yes, so this was the fabric that she sent over for us to pick, since we are going with a lighter color. It's like a misty, some kind of blue for Conference Room A, so that fabric has not been determined at this time.
Okay, so what is the design of the window treatments?
They are the Roman-
Do we have a picture of what we're going to do?
Yes, I do, and I left it out of here by mistake, but it is, I'll have Connie to bring it in, or you can stop by my desk, or I'll send it to you, but I do have it. It's the Roman curtain shutters. You know that they kind of lap over and roll down like that.
Okay, good. I'm just curious. We waited so long for that room to get a facelift and a few other lifts.
Yes, ma'am. Anything else? Okay, thank you.
So let me interject for just a second. So Mayor Woodfin just shared a message with me that VPD Chief Scott Thurman will announce at 4:00 PM the arrests made in three homicide cases, including the Hush Five Points South. So I won't go into all the details, but just wanted to share that information with you. So they'll be doing a press announcement here in five minutes. All right. Is there other information?
Yes, I can go through it in about a minute. The front is just basically elaborating on what I just spoke to you all about, and the furniture is coming from the Alabama State Bed, so it should be three to six weeks in delivery and installation once we get a purchase order put forth. Additionally, if we go to the back, I am also sending to each office the state-required retention and destruction guide for use to determine what files to keep and for how long. We do need help on that because most of the files in the back contain agendas, newspapers, things that, I won't say newspapers, but they were things that was not an original document, and most of the time, they can be recovered. So it is up to everybody as to what you put in, but they will not take those kinds of items when we send them off to permanent archive. The PIO team, I continue to work with our off-site storage facility management and city staff. We do have access to the units as the city staff continue to correct the application of money that was paid by the company, but it was applied to the wrong account. And therefore, the storage system, the storage company could not get their business license, and so that's what precipitated them telling us we were locked out because our invoice went unpaid because we couldn't secure a purchase order to pay them. But it looks like it was an internal misapplication on the city's behalf, so we're working to get that corrected. But in the meantime, they have given us access to the facility, and they have to do that anyway, under state law, and the law department was helpful in getting us that advance to them for us.
So just to make sure I heard that correctly, the storage facility that we were using has now successfully processed payment and gotten their business license?
Nope. We are working to correct that. They have paid the money for their business license, but it was applied to another account. So their account is showing past due, and therefore, license has not been issued to them. But I am told that the city does see that, and they're working to put that money back on their account, and then we'll be able to move forward. But in the meantime, we do have access.
Okay, good.
The PIO team is training on the new meltwater platform and will launch it entirely in the coming weeks. We are going to do an overview for all staff at some time when Kim will schedule that, and we'll invite the district office staff to come in and look at it with us. Kim is managing the V94 contract, and the engagement of council has been very supportive. Kim and staff continue to seek ways to advance awareness of educational opportunities for constituents. As soon as they evaluate the platform's oversight and management, a Roku platform will be established. Kim is working collaboratively with the city's website process to support input on what is needed for the council's platform. The expected launch date, as she knows it at this time, is late 2024 or early 2025.
Ms. Kidd, before you move on to your next point, because I know that you weren't able to join us for the mayor council retreat, I just wanted to point out with respect to I'm sorry, am I misremembering?
I look different some days. This is okay.
I'm sorry. I apologize. I'm confused about something, but anyway, the thing that I wanted to, that came up during the mayor council retreat that I wanted just to take a moment to reiterate is that we want to collaborate with Chris Hatcher on the ARPA projects to get a, you know, sort of comprehensive summary put together. And I think in terms of potential, you know, mailer in the future or something like that, that's one of the topics that I think we're interested in sharing with the public.
Yes, I believe the staff has started on that, Kim and her team. I think it's on, I know it's on Alicia's whiteboard, and I have the copy of the information that the team presented with the ARPA.
Okay.
So we will collaborate. Do you all have a time-sensitive point that you want that on, any date you're shooting for?
I think we're still trying to finalize some projects, so in best guess is probably first quarter of next calendar year.
Okay, so projects are expensed by the end of December, so you want it to go out before? But maybe all of councils may be expensed before or then?
Right, I think all of the funding will definitely be allocated by the end of the year, so, you know, I think that December 31st date is sort of the drop-dead date, if you will, for the, what projects are actually going to move forward. So I think, you know, once we get past that dates, the projects will be locked in at that point.
Okay. All right.
So that, I think, you know, January 1, we start working in earnest to put together summaries of all of the projects and packaging that to go out and be shared with the public.
Okay, all right. Okay, and we continue to seek support for expanding the gallery of distinguished citizens. The administration is reviewing alternate location possibilities. Additionally, we have asked Message Point to provide an onsite demonstration of a digital platform as an alternative. And once that date is secured, we will definitely ask you and/or your staff to be present to look at it. Departmental concerns, Jeff wanted me to say again that winterization of fleet vehicles with the change of seasons and weather conditions, we are asking each district office to assess its fleet vehicles, tires, and/or battery needs to be serviced by the fleet management team. So if you guys could, we do need to get that done. There are no constituent complaints as I know it, and the travel events are as noted. Here, the Economic Development Academy graduation is scheduled for those who are attending October 30th through November 1st. NLC Summit, as you know, is scheduled for November 12th through the 17th. And if you have not initiated travel plans today, please do so as soon as possible. And that's all I have right now. If there are any questions or other directives, we're open.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. We will move on to the next item on the agenda. It is update on implementation of municipal code lien enforcement bill, Ms. Director Thomas.
Good afternoon. Katrina Thomas, I service Director of the Department of Planting, Engineering and Permits, and I'm joined by Jason Yetlin. He serves as our Chief Administrative Analyst in our department and Attorney Jim Stanley with the Office of the City Attorney. And we're here today to provide you with an update on our partnership with the Center for Community Progress. We, as you know, code enforcement and just trying to move from the traditional approach to code enforcement to a more strategic approach to code enforcement requires partnership. We are thankful for the partnership that we have with the city council and with our state legislature, in which we're able to provide some leverage with state legislation that passed back in March with SB 9. So before you, you should have this panned out, and I'll go through this briefly. This Technical Assistance Scholarship was awarded to the city of Birmingham. We were one of two, it was Birmingham and two other cities in Ohio that was awarded this scholarship. It provides us about $40,000 of assistance from the Center for Community Progress to help us with some of our code enforcement efforts. The Center for Community Progress, their mission really is really about creating more equitable and efficient and effective ways of handling code enforcement, and so that a lot of our vacant and abandoned and deteriorated properties or bad properties are put back to reuse and repurpose within the community. And so they're doing that by educating people in the community on how to turn those problem properties into assets to the neighborhood and advocating for equitable policy and practice. This Technical Assistance Scholarship was awarded because, as a city, we are thinking about more ways that we can be more efficient and effective with our code enforcement and supporting a lot of our communities that are in need. As we know, some of those, again, some of those traditional ways of code enforcement have not been effective. You know that we have a complaint-driven system that we're trying to move away from. A lot of the property owners- A lot of the property owners may be out of town. We cannot reach them. They don't show up for court. And so this assistance is really helping us to reimagine how we can do code enforcement. And so we are excited to be partnering with them so that we can think more about how we can make or more neighborhood revitalization within our communities, especially in areas where we know we see, you know, weak housing markets and high levels of poverty and widespread vacancy. Those areas have become really challenging. And as you know, we spend millions of dollars on demolition to help clear blight. But oftentimes, those liens that are placed on those properties go unpaid. And so this tool will help us to focus more of our efforts on repurposing some of those properties. The last thing I'll share, as you already know, with vacant and abandoned properties, they do, can tend to cause physical harm and emotional health issues within our neighbors. They, those areas that have a high level of vacancy also increase violent crime, reduce surrounding property values, decrease municipal tax revenues, and increase municipal costs. As you know, the cost of code enforcement and the cost of trying to maintain those properties have been increasing. One of the core policies with the Center for Community Progress is their notion of fix it up, pay it up, or give it up. And what that means is that we expect the owners to fix up their property and take care of their property. We can't just go on to their private property to abate nuisances. But when we have to go in and do something about it, we do expect the property owner to pay that cost because there's a cost for us for doing that. And so the give it up is that when we have to go in, fix it up, or you don't do anything with it and you don't pay it up, then we need to be able to transfer those properties to a responsible owner. And so their core policy is one that we are trying to implement. We recognize that there's not a one-size-fits-all when it comes to code enforcement. When we're looking at properties and looking at who owns the property, that really dictates how we utilize enforcement. So for our owner-occupied properties, we do try to educate them and provide information about tools and resources that are available to help them if they don't have the resources to fix their property up. But for, you know, out-of-town LLCs or those who just will not comply, then we do have to have more tools in our toolbox. And so this legislation will help us do that. This legislation, which Jim Stanley will talk more about, he's been the brain person behind a lot of this. It will not apply to owner-occupied properties. This is just vacant and abandoned and deteriorated properties that we have placed liens on the property and those liens have gone uncollected. And it will allow us to foreclose on those properties at an auction. And eventually will allow us to put those properties in the hands of someone who would do right by them. And I'll let Jim talk a little bit more about the bill. We will need local legislation to implement the bill. So that local legislation will lay out the administrative processes by which we will implement the tool.
Yeah, good afternoon. I'm Jim Stanley from the Office of the City Attorney. We were successful in the last legislative session in getting a bill passed. It was Senate Bill 9. There's an act number associated with it, which I don't know. It has already been codified in the Code of Alabama in Title 11, Chapter 70B. What this bill is intended to do is give the city an effective and efficient and equitable way to now foreclose on our assessment liens. And to really understand, you know, why that's important, we can think about right now kind of three buckets we have for liens and what happens with those. So we're able to, under our Property Maintenance Code and other codes, if we go in and stabilize a property or expend cost to address a code violation, we can put a lien on the property to recover our cost. Right now, there is nothing at all in state law that says what the priority that lien has or give you any way to foreclose the lien. It really is there basically as a nuisance. So if somebody comes in, wants to buy the property, or they want to refinance, then they'll probably have to deal with us. But otherwise, it's there unpaid, really in perpetuity. For a large number of these properties, it's going to be a long time before there ever any activity to buy them. The second bucket of liens, which you see, I think virtually every week, are demolition liens. We demolish a structure. We're able to assess the cost pursuant to state law. We put, record a lien in the probate office on the property. There is a method in the statute to foreclose that lien. But because the statutory method doesn't comport with due process requirements, it doesn't ensure, for example, that everybody with an interest in the property at any stage in the process gets notice, then if we foreclose those liens, we're not considered to have clear title to the property. So that really just adds more encumbrance on the property. And, you know, a lot of our assessment liens are we're adding debt to the property that starts to far exceed the value of the property. And if you just think about a market situation, the private market is not going to act on those properties. It doesn't make sense to buy a property that has a value that's a fraction of what you have to pay to clear title to it. The third bucket is, and probably the largest in volume, are weed assessments. Right now, under state law, we send weed assessments to the county to be added to the tax bill. At different times, and I've heard is the case now, if the property is tax delinquent, the county has not been adding those to a tax bill. They don't really send a bill in that case, and so no bill is created. And it appears that those are right now on tax delinquent properties, you know, lost cost. So, you know, that's hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars, that are just really not recoverable. We might get recovery if somebody comes in and consults our finance department and gets a payoff on that. But again, that's, there's not really an effective way to be proactive with that. What this bill will do will let us record in the probate office lien for any of these properties and then go to court and do a judicial foreclosure on the property that ensures that due process is met. Everybody with an interest gets notified. They have a chance to come if they want to pay the amount of the assessment, then they can pay that. There's not a problem. And if not, you know, this is the give it up stage of what Director Thomas said. The property is foreclosed. It's ordered to be sold. And what comes out of that sale will be property with clear title. We worked with the title insurance industry and crafted the legislation to make sure the legislation said the things it needs to say in order to have them comfortable with that. And we're working with some title underwriters right now to discuss the process. The statute made it clear that except for property tax liens, which always have top priority, our liens have a super priority. They got priority over any other kind of encumbrances, old mortgages, you know, judgment liens, anything like that on the property. So that gives us a good position to clear title on the property. The statute is clear and our ordinance, when it comes forward, be clear. We are not going to operate on our owner-occupied property. We are not in the business of putting people out of their homes where they live. There, you know, a program is in place and probably more things can be done to assist people in that case. But this legislation is not going to put the city in the position where we're kicking people out of their homes. It's just not going to be done that way. A substantial number of these properties, there'll be, if you find people with interest, there probably going to be people have a, you know, small interest in the property. Basically walked away from it. They're really not interested anymore. Again, this will give us an opportunity to take those properties, clear title, put them back in the hands of responsible owners. As Director Thomas said, it will require an ordinance to implement. The ordinance is required to have certain provisions in it by state law. And there's some other things we're working through with Center for Community Progress that will help inform the ordinance. You know, because you think about it, how many weed assessments you all deal with every week? We're not going to have capacity just to jump in and take all of those to court at one time. So we're going to look at building in based on data we get, you know, some thresholds of property that it gets, for example, a certain dollar amount of weed liens or maybe so many liens within a period of time. Those are having priority to go through the court process. And that will all be spelled out of the ordinance. Again, we're going to kind of mine the data as we put the ordinance together to see if it really makes sense in a way that's something we can effectively administer. And if you have any questions about that, I'll be glad to answer those.
Did you, did you say that Jefferson County, I guess it's probate, but are they recording the weed abatement liens?
Weed, the statute gives you an option to record those. The city has not done that maybe ever. I think part of it is there is a cost to record each lien. And the, I think the amount, the frequency of us getting paid on those assessments is probably low enough that it's not really cost-effective right now to record the lien, especially where the foreclosure doesn't really move the needle much. But, you know, what we'll do under this legislation is we record the lien, but now we've got a way to go to court to foreclose the lien and really have an effective way to enforce that lien.
Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I just had a question because I know from time to time we get someone purchasing, I guess, paying us. It's rare, but every now and then we get someone paying us, I guess, whatever we have into the lot to make the liens go away. And that person already has an interest or is an heir or has some right to redeem in those cases? That's not some third party?
No.
Like if a third party bought it, would we, I guess, dissolve those liens in their favor? I guess we would, huh?
Well, if they purchase another inch to the property, then they would have the required interest. There's a provision in our city code that really applies to demolition liens. By statute, there's a two-year right of redemption on demolition liens. And unfortunately, the statutory provision to cut out that right is outdated and murky. And I think there's some big loopholes in it. So it's really not effective. What our city code provides is that beyond that two-year period, somebody can approach the finance department. They have to have an interest in the property. They have to be able to come in and pay the city's cost plus interest and any cost we had in any kind of foreclosure. And then they're able to get a quit lien deed to the property. And those come to the council periodically. You probably have a few dozen a year. You see them on the agenda fairly often.
Yes, I was just wondering if whatever process we adopt here would, you know, I guess, it would, it sounds like it would have to have some due process to let people who have an interest in the property know that the city, because I guess if we could be made whole and they become responsible, that would maybe be preferential to us taking it. But it also strikes me that, you know, we don't want to then become owner of a lot of blighted property. So we probably want to be pretty selective and strategic in, you know, when we use this, like either in favor of some sort of development, to support some economic development or for the land bank because they might have fewer opportunities until we get the law updated. You know, it'd be another way that they could get control of property and try to put it back in production. But it just strikes me that somebody's got to, you know, manage the properties once they're acquired this way.
Yeah, and, you know, there will be costs to the city to take it through a judicial process. Their staffing cost will certainly want to be more proactive in how we address the liens that might go through this process. I think the idea is if we focus resources on that kind of as a front-end measure, we won't have to come back and deal with that property, cutting weeds over and over again or, you know, continuing to abate nuisances on the property.
So do we have good records of all the liens? When I think about the demolition liens, I think about Mike Fleagle and Lanell Driver. She had all those paper files with all those foreclosed demolition liens, like fixed asset accounting down in finance. But it sounds like the weed assessments, which we have the most of, those are, I mean, who keeps up with all this? I guess that's my short question.
The finance department processes the assessment stage, and they should have records of that. I think one thing we're excited about is we do have the Toleme software now, which is supposed to operate in this space and really probably give us a better way to not only keep up with the individual liens, but kind of match up liens versus property vacancy versus tax delinquency, to put that data together, to come up with some ideas about, you know, what we need to look for early on on a property, if it's tax delinquency, learning that early so we can pay attention to that property, really maybe intervene earlier with code enforcement before it gets too terribly bad. But that tool, a lot of cities are using effectively in this area to kind of keep up with the data on your liens.
Question, does the law allow for this process to be carried through if there's any lien on the property? So typically, you know, with like a weed abatement, you know, I can't imagine a situation where simple weed abatement, you know, going in and doing herbicide treatment and cutting the grass. I can't foresee a situation where that type of assessment would exceed the value of the property. So I'm asking, you know, if we have a lien on the property for, say, $1,000, but the assessed value of the property is $10,000, does this process allow us to foreclose on that lien with that amount?
Under the statute, it would be any lien that's a code enforcement lien. We tried to be as inclusive as what those liens are as we could. I think the guardrail there is going to be more practical that, again, we're not going to have the resources to go out and enforce every weed lien on the property. What we're going to look to do, and Mobile has similar legislation, and they've got an ordinance that addresses this. They're not using it very extensively. But for example, for weed abatements or for just general code enforcement liens, they've got a dollar threshold before they can be foreclosed on. We'll probably look at something like that, again, trying to make, you know, look at the data to see what makes sense to give us a number we can actually manage in a foreclosure process. We don't want to just throw everything in and then we're frustrated because we're, you know, it takes us forever to foreclose. But we're going to look for a data-driven process to come up with dollar amounts and a set of criteria in our ordinance that will inform us as to when properties might go through foreclosure.
Okay. Counselor Abbott.
Did I hear you say that Jefferson County is supposed to add the liens to the property taxes, but that they don't always do it? And they don't do it at all to tax delinquent properties?
Yeah, I think it's, at least our latest information is currently they're not adding those for tax delinquent properties. They did, they did not at one point in the past. I think that changed. But the last time we inquired, they were not doing that. Our finance departments indicated that. So those.
Is there some reason for that?
I think it's in part because they don't send out tax bills on the tax delinquent property.
But if somebody buys the property for taxes, they should be paying the liens.
They should, and it should come, we should be paid off at that time. And some of the wheelings are added, and we do get recovery for that. But I think for the tax delinquent properties, it's not assurance they do that. Our best bet there is if the buyer comes to the city and they try to, title companies will direct the buyers to get a statement there are no assessments on the property from municipality. That's pretty standard. It's not required by law, but it's pretty standard. So we do get people coming to the city, you know, trying to clear title. And we do get some payoffs in that case on our weed assessments. But a lot of times, it may be years before that happens. And, you know, after a while, those records become hard to track. And so we're not sure that we're getting full payment for some of the older liens.
So Counselor Abbott.
Yeah, because we have, we have properties that we've not only demolished a building, we've been cutting the grass for the last 10 or 15 years at $2,000 a cut. So, you know, at some point in some parts of town, that would definitely be more than the property's worth. But in other parts of town, might be good. Mr. Mitchell?
Yeah, just to kind of add on, and Attorney Stanley can jump in too, because even when people try to obtain property from the city, we don't have all the information. So we try to, it makes it mundane on the property owner or the person. So we try to, it makes it mundane on the property owner, or the person who wants to buy the property. They have to check with us and they have to check with the county before they go to the closing table, before we even get to the closing documents. And then sometimes we do our due diligence, but sometimes the county, not to throw their money to us, but we are, then do their full due diligence when it comes to these properties. So it's kind of like you come to the city, you get our information. Then we have to say, you might want to check with the county to make sure there's no liens on the county that needs to be assessed.
Okay, and our liens, you said, I think, I wrote it down anyway, that our liens have priority over other liens on the property?
Yeah, there are provisions already in the law that provided for that, but they're not as clear. The new legislation basically says that we have priority over everything with our code enforcement liens, over everything but the tax liens.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to get some help from our lobbyists to get this bill, a bill passed?
This has been passed. The next step will bring an ordinance to the city council.
All we need is an ordinance?
Yes, right. And we are working on the ordinance. And again, we want it to be kind of data-driven, so it's always be something we can really use, that we're not just throwing every property into the process, but we have some threshold for when we actually take action on the property, something we can manage.
Okay, and there was one other thing you said that I may have misunderstood, talking about the city doing improvement to a property?
We have the authority under, for example, property maintenance code to go on the property, give the owners notice that you need to remedy this violation. And we have the authority to go in and abate the problem. It may be stabilizing the building, you know, whatever it may be. It's often probably not cost-effective for us to do that right now, especially when there's no, really no way to recover that cost. But this law would let us, you know, take those liens and go through a foreclosure process with them so we're able to recover our costs and really intervene earlier on some of these properties. So we're not at the stage where we're facing demolition or, you know, post demolition weed abatement, where we're able to move in while the structure may still have some ability to be salvaged.
Is that kind of like the demolition by neglect law that we paid to have passed in Montgomery and then never used?
A little bit, but this has to process that that doesn't. And that also had, did not give city liens priority over some mortgages. So we could often be fixing up the property for the bank to foreclose under that law.
I can think of a few times when that would still be a good idea, but then I can think of an awful lot of times when it wouldn't be. Okay, well, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Counselor Clark?
I just had a quick one about, so if I was buying a lot and wanted to know, say I did a title search and it showed that there were city liens, how would I resolve those?
Yeah, and the title search is just going to show you recorded liens, which is primarily demolition liens.
So if I had weed abatement liens, they wouldn't show up. How would I, how would I come down here and check? And I hear you saying that there's a way to do that. But I've also heard people say that they've had to close with some money in escrow just in case something came up because maybe they didn't get a, they didn't get it resolved in time for closing. So I'm just wondering.
One thing that, with our network disruption, that we, I think for a while, didn't have the ability to search that data and to give people. What people come in for is what's called a no assessment letter. Again, that's not really required by state law, but pretty much all the title companies will put that in your title commitment as a requirement. They want a letter from the city stating that there are no assessments against the property. So they come to the finance department, they, you know, look at the property address, parcel number, and tell the inquiring person either there are liens and this is the payoff amount or there are no liens on the property. If there are no liens, they give them a printout with a stamp on it saying there are no assessments. Because the way we process liens, sometimes the lien's in the process and not on the records before we get to that point. And somebody will get a no assessment letter when there are assessments. And periodically, again, I think you'll see on the council agenda, we've come in to rescind assessments because of that situation.
So, okay, two quick follow-ups. So have we gotten better at responding for real estate transactions since the network disruption? Are we back functioning, I guess, in better timing or we still?
Yeah, so that was one of the items that was before the council, we're trying to get some portions of our mainframe and some other things back up online. So yes, we're trying, we're still manually doing it, but we still will probably miss a couple of things because we can't see the full system when it comes to assessments.
So my other question is, okay, so that's still in progress, but will Toleme help us to, you know, because all this code enforcement is an extreme administrative burden. I mean, the way, just the volume of stuff and the letters and the council agenda. And then, you know, each step has to come to the council agenda. And then, you know, sometimes we're approving the liens like a couple of years after.
More than that.
I mean, so is that goodness?
Four, five years.
Is technology going to help us compress some of this processing time? Because, I mean, do we, is there a cure for that? I know, to get everything back in production, right, and everybody paying their taxes. Is there going to, okay, good, because I know...
It will, that's the hope. But we do have a lot of weed assessments that you see on a weekly basis. So trying to catch up on the backlog and everything else, it's a very mundane task.
I think that's a cost we don't have a way to quantify, but it's more, I mean, there's the staff time and the paper and that's a lot of administration, anyway.
Or we can at least stop cutting the grass and just take the complaints.
So in terms of timeline for an ordinance and, you know, how that might proceed through the council? I mean, is this a...
Can you tell us where you want it to go and then we can work backwards? What committee? Do you want to commit it as a whole?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know if it fits the category. Yeah, probably community development, but what's, when are you guys, what are you guys thinking in terms of timeline?
I work with the team to see what the capacity looks like on getting it completed. And then we can give you a definite date if you want to on the community development or a commit it whole since it touches the entire city. I mean, usually we do the ordinance changes when it comes to the code, do commit it whole. So that would just be my suggestion.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine.
Let's hurry up and do it.
For Tim Alexander?
Yes, thank you very much. I just want to be sure that I'm clear on the timeline and next steps. So I'm very excited that the bill was passed and that we've received this technical grant. Just wanted to ensure that I am clear on, so you've done research and preparation. I believe we have a meeting or had an invite next week. Is this the stakeholders and trying to get all of the people that this would touch? What is that process going to be like?
Yes, so with the technical assistance scholarship, the community progress representatives will be here next week. So they will be conducting interviews. They'll be meeting with Mayor Woodfin, with your team on Tuesday, meeting with our on-the-ground code enforcement staff, other stakeholders, judges, our finance department. So they will be gathering more information to assist them in their research, to help us leverage this tool. And then the other part of that will also be the community education. They will be presenting before the Citizens Advisory Board on Monday night. And so a part of that discussion will be just helping us figure out how to prioritize properties and how to educate the public around this bill. We have them until mid-December for the technical assistance.
Probably about mid-December.
Yes.
When that portion is done. And then at that point, you'll be able to bring back to us what you think will give us more teeth in creating this additional ordinance. Will you be at that time ready to also talk about administration or what staff requirements you may need in order to enforce or ensure those teeth get, you know?
Prioritized.
Okay, yes, thank you. That's it.
Counselor Tate?
Thank you, Mr. President. Congratulations to Counsel Clark and Counsel Smith for spearheading this. I mean, I'm listening and hear what everything, hear what everyone is saying. But one question that I have is towards people that have these apartment complexes that are remodeling apartment complexes. I see a lot of that going on in the district. Now, actually, matter of fact, ran across a guy who was clearing out some apartment complexes and was throwing all the rubbish in the alley. No dumpster on site. It's about two or three like that that's on shutters work. But curious to know, how are you guys, you know, zooming down on these people? And like, what does, do they know they have to have a dumpster? Because it seems like people are just not, I mean, I think that they are aware. I just think they're just giving away, as Proteum said, not enough boots on the ground, you know, to make sure that people are not doing things that they shouldn't be doing. Because I know these particular areas, I send this over almost on a weekly basis to my GA person for the city to come and extract things that should be in a dumpster. So just really want to give y'all feedback on how robust is code enforcement really checking these multifamily units that are being on rehab?
So Counselor Tate, when they're doing renovation work, they should have a permit. And so our building inspectors are implementing and enforcing the tech code that went into effect October 1st. Where we now do require a dumpster or roll-off to be on-site or for them to haul the construction debris away every day so that it's not a nuisance. So our building enforcement team, our code enforcement teams, they are leaning in on that. Obviously, there are a few just bad players who just will not cooperate. And so we are leaning in and we are not releasing their certificates of completion until they make sure that the site is clear. So continue to report those. Our Department of Public Works does an awesome job cleaning those properties up, but sometimes that enables the behavior because they think that we're supposed to pick it up. But the property owners and the property managers should be responsible for hauling that debris away.
Derek, I must thank you.
Okay, is it fair to assume that if there are code enforcement liens on a property, that a person wanting to do renovation rehab on the property, when they come to get their building permit, they have to take care of the code enforcement liens first?
I mean, that would be ideal, but I don't, you know, if someone wants to renovate their property, we welcome that. We want to see that. Usually when we send out a notice to state that a property has some type of property maintenance code violations, we want to see them at our permit counter to renovate properties. And so if they, usually they will not find out about the liens until they're changing hands with the property or going after a loan. But we are available to assist them if they need that information.
And of course, if they're getting bank financing for the renovations, the banks can insist they have good title and that they want to do this at that point.
Okay. Counselor Abbott?
How would this meld with the E-Police? Do we even still have environmental police or have they disappeared? Because they were supposed to do this work. And, you know, the city used to have environmental police with even environmental police cars.
So as you may recall, last year, we did, we added four APoS officers to, they work under the direction of the police chief, but they also serve primarily code enforcement. So they handle environmental code enforcement, Counsel Abbott, and they conduct the duties that the traditional years ago E-Police were doing, where they are targeting occupied properties. And so they do issue on-the-site citations for weeds, inoperable vehicles, junky properties. So they are doing that. There are four officers who are assigned, one per quadrant, and they are actively processing those cases. Most of the time when they show up, they are in uniform, so the property owners will comply. If they do not comply, then they are summoned to municipal court. And we are seeing a lot of success from those teams being on the ground. So they're out there, they're four officers. You may recall meeting some of them when we conducted the coffee with code enforcement.
Code enforcement. Well, I was thinking that maybe, but, you know, the CAB was very instrumental in the formation of the E-Police. That was a really big fight to finally get that moving. And then we only had one APoS certified officer, maybe two for a while, but one fell in a hole and I think got injured and that was the end of having two. So having people that really are out there, because in my neighborhoods, people renovate houses and buildings all the time without permits. And what they'll do is during the night, they go dump all the construction materials, like in front of the school or on somebody else's property, you know, somewhere where they know the city will have to come pick it up, even though we say we don't pick up construction materials. We say that, but we pick them up all the time. So, you know, that's what happens over where I am, is they'll even dump them on occupied property if nobody's home. You know, it's a real problem because, and these are, I assume, people with no permits because surely, surely that wouldn't happen if they had a permit. But they also hide the permits if they've got them, you know, because they don't have them posted. So anyway, I just wondered how that squared with the E-Police. But so the E-Police are still around, they just report to the police department instead of Public Works?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So any additional questions? So I guess we're ready to move on to the next topic. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have an update on parking reform from Director Fowler.
Hello, and I'm going to ask some of my teammates, colleagues from other departments to come up too, because this is definitely an interdepartmental effort. It's a more complex effort than it sounds. So again, my name is James Fowler. I serve as the Director of the City's Department of Transportation. And with me, we've got representatives from VPD, so the Police Department, the Office of the City Attorney, also the Municipal Court, and then IMS or Information Management Systems. And so that's actually a small sampling of our team because it affects others as well. And I'm sure you guys are going to have questions. Because what we're here to talk about today is something I'm actually very interested in and I think is very important. And when I hand out the packets, you have them? Okay, great. So the packets that you have in front of you, I won't go into detail over this in the interest of time, but just a quick, high-level overview of the 12 steps that we identified that are important to build a more effective on-street parking system. And so what we're here to talk about today is related to number four, which we feel is the weakest link in that system, which is accountability when you receive a parking ticket and you don't pay that parking ticket. So I've heard many people say that there's no repercussions for that and we have not had a good system for creating accountability. And so on the second page is the policy that we are proposing. And we have put in a lot of effort in exploring different ways to pursue this. And so this is a summary of that. I expect you'll have questions and so we'll just talk through it really fast now. The most important part is the basic rule itself that we are proposing, and that's in blue at the top. So an accountability rule of if a person has three unpaid parking violations, on their fourth violation, their car will get towed. So this would go into effect in April of next year. And we can talk about that timeline in just a few minutes. What I want to clarify is that on the fourth violation is when we would tow the vehicle. So the first bullet point under there is we do not intend to actively search for vehicles with unpaid parking tickets. We would only tow a car if there is a current violation and they meet that threshold of three prior violations. So we're not out searching for vehicles. We're not trying to be predatory. If a person parks legally, they can come into Birmingham and handle business that they need to handle. But on their fourth violation, that's when they would be eligible to be towed. And our intention, uh, between now and April, so assuming that we get good feedback from you all today, would be to start publicizing this policy to give people time to clear up their affairs between now and April of next year. So we would launch a publicity campaign and get, um, and actually send out mailers to people that already have three violations. So we would do that between now and April of next year. And then, so just speaking to how the process would work, if a person's car gets towed, that person can go to the BPD Property Desk and pay their fees in total. And that includes their parking violations, and then they would be able to get their car released, uh, and their record would be cleared. And that's actually how the process works today when the city tows cars. Um, we tow cars currently for all sorts of reasons. So if a person gets arrested and we have to remove their car, their car gets towed, um, a person has to go to the BPD Property Desk to get that cleared up and to retrieve their car. They have to demonstrate that they own the car to get their car. The next bullet is if a person cannot afford to pay the total fees, uh, we talked a lot about this. They still need to go to the BPD Property Desk and they can pay just the towing fee and get their car released. But in that instance, they would have to set up a time with the Municipal Court, uh, to meet with the Municipal Court to clear up their affairs. And then lastly, just want to emphasize this point, um, we are not trying to design a system that is overly punitive. Uh, so the system is not designed, uh, to place anybody in jail. The worst penalty that a person would face is that if they are not in compliance and we come across their, uh, car and they have, are actively in a parking violation, then we could tow their car at that time. So at any point in time, a person can come into town and park legally to clear up their affairs or, or do the business that they need to do. And if they commit a violation at that time, then they could be towed. So I'll pause there, so in case you guys have questions.
I do.
Counselor Abbott?
So, does this mean that we will start ticketing people for parking and no parking any time zones and in front of fire hydrants and other places that they're not supposed to park? We're going to actually begin to do that?
So we do ticket for those currently, um, and, but because there's not clear accountability for if you don't pay your ticket, we don't have real strong compliance. So this will help, the, the goal of this, it's not to generate revenue. The goal of this is to generate a culture of compliance in our parking system.
Well, that's good. I've always been told that no parking anytime meant that it was dangerous to the public to park there. But we routinely in Five Point South have people parked under no parking anytime signs and in front of fire hydrants. And no one, in fact, sometimes the police park in front of the fire hydrant.
Counselor Abbott?
So, you know, we have, we have a need to actually start enforcing the law, especially if we have people designated as parking enforcement.
Can I?
So we, the team, um, very closely in conjunction with BPD have been trying to find a solution for this. As, uh, Director Fowler said, we have actually been doing pretty well on this in the downtown court about finding violators and actually towing them. Of course, we have the issue of just having the capacity of police officers to come write a ticket, wait on a, a tow truck to come to do the enforcement part. So what we're trying to do is enforce our laws so we can find a better way to expedite this process in conjunction with our, our towing partners, so we can be more efficient and effective in that manner. The council recently approved us to get part-time, um, police officers. We see that as a, uh, added bonus for us that doesn't have to take those police officers off their, their current beats, that they were two-fold work, certain events that we don't want police officers working as a work that regular beats and be in conjunction with BPD and, um, our parking enforcement agents to be their agent to be able to write the ticket, call out our towing companies, tow and then on to the next one. So we, we're, we're trying to close that gap that has always been one of those misnomers in the city for a very long time. So that's what we're trying to do.
So does parking enforcement, the people with the little cars, do they get to call the towing company just like a police officer would?
So the policy that we have in place right now is that a sworn officer needs to tow a vehicle. That's just because of the nature of the, it's, it's more likely to be a high conflict interaction. And so, um, we don't currently use our parking enforcement officers, which are not sworn officers, to tow vehicles. They do write a lot of tickets, but we don't use them to tow.
So if they came on one with 57 tickets that they'd never paid, they would call a police officer and say, hey, I need a tow?
Yes, that is correct.
Good. I know some of those people.
Well, that, that leads to the next question that I have is, um, I know Judge Sparks, I see you back there. Hello, sir. I know you've been, you've had a spreadsheet of, uh, parking violations for quite a long time. And so my question to you is, how many, um, vehicles or persons on that list currently have three or more pa- parking tickets outstanding?
Now, that's a great question, Counselor. Um, we don't have that number based on that query, that specific query of three or four, three or more parking tickets. And it would probably take a while to run it based on the process that we have to, we have to go through. We have, we have other information that we pulled, not anticipating that particular question, but, uh, it's, it's a lot.
So let me ask a, a different question. How many outstanding unpaid parking violations are there total currently?
Well, I, I think the number is going to shock you.
Maybe not.
Based on the statistics that we've run, it's over 700,000.
700,000?
Yes. Tickets. Now, now, that's since 2011, since 2011, 700,000 tickets. Um, but I, I will, if I could say this, we, parking has been an issue with the city for a long, 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 long time. I was, as I was coming over here, I was just trying to remember the number of law firms that I knew who had contracts with the city to collect parking tickets. And I, I went through about three or four of them and I know we haven't had a contract in the last 15 years to collect parking tickets. So it's, it's something that, you know, we have to have the right manpower on our staff in order to do internal things. But it's also been an issue for this council, for the administration, for 30 years or more easily. And, um, the fact that this kind of coalition has gotten together to look at it is, uh, is wonderful. And, uh, some good things are going to come out of this collaboration. Um, we got some things we can clean up from yesteryear, but I believe going forward, this process is going to help us out significantly. I told you the number would shock you.
Yes. Yeah, I wouldn't expect in that. Counselor Tate?
That's a lot, Judge Sparks. I like this, but I, I did hear the judge say over 700,000 outstanding parking tickets. And I believe in accountability for throttle, but what is the, what is the potential of a clean slate? And so, and, and I know this doesn't go into effect until 2025, you know, I'm just saying a clean slate may mean, like Counsel Abbott said, you got 57 tickets. I can imagine like what your, I'm just hypothetically saying you got $2,500 in parking fines. What's the possibility of a clean slate to a, not letting you just get away, but just a certain amount? And then I know, Judge, I know that you've done amnesty clinics, you know, I'm like, I mean, I'm just putting it out there, just, you know, strike up a conversation to see, you know, is that a poss- is that a possibility for a clean slate? And, you know, not fully a clean slate, but maybe last 10 years. So, I mean, I just want to know that, is it a possibility before this? Because basically you're giving people opportunity to come forward to, you know, some people may have five, they may be able to satisfy. But I'm talking about people with astronomical numbers, like.
Thousands.
Most people can't afford to feed theyself. Most people can't afford to pay their power bill. It's a struggle. I gotta pay my bill. I'm gonna pay this parking ticket. So how we, how do we look in their lens as a clean slate?
The, uh, possibility of an amnesty.
It's the real deal. So if you violate, then you gotta, this is on record. It's a law and, so I mean, I'm, that's just, you know, just to strike up a conversation, um, I know that, that's probably something like you said, Judge, the administration will have to really do a deep dive. But I'm just interested in, to know like, what does a clean slate looks like for some people? Um, and if you got, you know, I'm just saying if you got 10 or less, then you pay. If not, then, you know, like.
Yeah. I mean, just my reaction to that would be that, you know, I'm not a, a, opposed to that, that idea. But I do know, based on the records that I saw seven years ago when I visited Municipal Court, that we have quite a number of people who are just habitual offenders who have a pattern of behavior, that demonstrates that they don't care, you know? And, you know, part of me says that I'm not inclined to just forgive their, you know, bad behavior.
City jail would be good. They'd never have a parking ticket again.
And can't go to work.
So.
I have a question.
Community service, like convert their tickets into.
Absolutely.
Community service. Just don't, I'm, I'm like, again, accountability. And I'm thinking, you know, from a PO lens, like when people had fines and fees that they could not satisfy, we would convert those fines and fees into community service at an hourly rate or whatever the minimum wage was. You may have to, you may have to do a thousand hours of community service, but not, as Counselor President said, not letting people get in the way scotch free. Um, I mean, it's, it's just a conversation. I mean, I think it's something worth discussing.
Me too.
Well, I'm very appreciative of the timeliness of this. Uh, just on social media this week, there was an extensive conversation about how we don't enforce this. It's almost laughable. People know this. And, um, they were actually talking about, you know, people come to visit our city or work downtown or work anywhere where there's this, um, parking, um, how we weren't able to enforce it or how we were not. So I'm excited to see anything that would be done to reform what is currently taking place. I did want to ask, when it comes to the meter reader and they're, once they're aware, how would they be aware of the vehicles that are beyond the threshold? Is there, I see IMS and I see, um, PEP. So how would that work?
There's, uh, probably two people that could answer that question, but, uh, we're going through a procurement process right now. We're investigating different software options. There are different vendors that help to, because we do have the database of the tickets and so it's up to date, but how do we get the database to the field in real time so that it's accurate? So that's why we've been working with IMS is to identify a software that works with our systems. And then also, um, so Travis Brooks is the head of our parking enforcement team with BPD. So his team are the officers that go out and so they would have the device, which could be a phone or an iPad. Doesn't have to be that complicated, but it accesses that database.
Perfect. And, um, just, we were talking about the enforcement. So it's still the plan that the meter reader would call, we feel we have.
Parking enforcement.
I'm so sorry. Am I dating myself?
Parking enforcement.
The stewardess versus the airline, whatever, meter reader? Well, anyway, um, what you call?
Parking enforcement officer.
Parking enforcement officer. Please forgive me. Um, so tell me then, would we still have to have a police officer that have to respond to that call? Is that the way we're going?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
And did, were we thinking we could utilize the A-post? Or, or are we talking about the other?
Yeah, that's the, hopefully the, 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 either the part-time or the retirees can be dedicated to that field in, in, like I said, special events.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. I, I am again, so excited to see this, that I did name the right titles for people. But I do apologize, but, um, I am excited to see this. Thank you. Thank you.
Director Fowler, um, how do I check to see if I have unpaid parking tickets?
It's a great question. It's one of the main links on the city's, uh, current website and it'll be prominent on the redesigned website as well. So it's pretty easy. Just go to the, uh, BirminghamAL.gov and you'll see the link.
About a federal courthouse in Park Mobile, and I jumped out my car and I was like, oh, I'm just gonna run in the bank. And I was like, oh no, you don't. I punched my little information in and the A Park Mobile.
My final question. Does it track it by your tag number that the offenses? So if I have a new tag in this 10-year period, you may, are you able to still merge the offenses, I guess I want to say?
So that's, that's one of the complications in pulling the information, because it's tracked by tag number. Um, and, um, that tag number has to then be connected to NCIC to pull the owner of the tag. And so it's a bifurcated process that we have to go through, uh, in order to get it. That's one reason it takes a long time to pull it. Um, but yes, an individual could have multiple tags. That's a complication.
So, so question. So I actually went to that website and, and ran my driver's license number. Um, and no parking violations, um, came up. Now, I'm gonna tell you, I'm pretty sure that I got a couple of unpaid parking tickets on me and, um.
You might want to remain silent.
I'm, you know, I, with that 700,000 number, um, there's probably a few of us sitting in this room that's got some. Anyway.
I think it speaks to the complexity that the OCA is running to in trying to get legislation for this issue. Because, uh, if it's local legislation, um, it might not get the worst SCOTF laws because they may not have Jefferson County tags. And so it's gotta be something that has a wider applic- statewide application, just to get every tag that comes into Birmingham every day and parks. Um, that's been one of the difficulties in getting, I guess, the attention on the issue. Because everybody doesn't have parking issues like we have. Um, they're not as cognizant of the problem as we are. And so getting everybody to sign off on some legislation would help us out significantly, but that's been the problem.
I do want to follow up on that because that makes me also, uh, remember, part of that conversation about the traffic violations was also, uh, traffic light camera violations. And the question was, are those held, are you held accountable by state law? So the question here would be, which I don't think they, those fa- fines are. So is this where we would have to move? We need to maybe look at that also? Do, do you think we'd need that type of support for this type of legisla- local legislation?
To get traffic light cameras?
No, no, no. Don't want traffic light cameras, but I'm saying how to enforce them.
Yes.
The conversation was they're not as enforced because someone may be driving your car and run through the lights.
Well, right at UAB, you got students who come from everywhere, many of them not from Jefferson County, but they're in their parents' car.
Right.
It's got a tag on it from Montgomery County, oh, I mean, Mobile. Uh, and so, uh, being able to enforce it on that tag would be, uh, well, you wouldn't be able to.
So you're saying we might need some state legislation as well, or that would be helpful?
I think you would have to have state legislation.
Thanks.
Ms. President?
Counselor Abbott?
You're not saying that people who have tags from other counties would not be towed under this program, are you?
No.
Because in my neighborhood, everybody's got a Shelby County tag. And I guess it's students that come from Shelby County, so I would want them to get towed away if I was going to get.
But they would still be listed as having a ticket.
Yeah, well, if it gets towed, it's gone.
Right.
Yeah. I thi- I think, you know, going back to Protem Alexander's question, um, I know that I've recently, in the past couple of years, got a new tag number for, for my vehicle. Um, so if the ticket was issued, you know, when my vehicle had a different tag number on it than it does currently, if I'm, you know, currently actively involved in a parking violation and they run that tag number, they may not see those past tickets because, but Judge, you're saying?
I think our process is going to run connections to all the tag numbers, so your name would just appear twice under two tickets. I think that's how, that when we'd run it, it would run that way.
Okay. I mean, the important thing is we're moving in the right direction, you know, with current situation, you know, again, we have sort of a. You know, again, we have sort of a, a culture now of where people, people just kind of know if you get a parking ticket, there's little or no consequences. So we're setting up a situation where there will be some serious con- consequences if, especially if you're a habitual offender. So beyond the, okay, so they get, they have three tickets, they're in an acting park, parking violation. They get towed. In order to recover their vehicle, they have to pa- pay all those past tickets and the $160 to get their vehicle out of impound. Do they just reset the clock after that?
If they pay all of their previous tickets and the towing fee, then it does get reset. So clean slate, they get their car back, prove they own the car, they get their car back and they're free to go. I want to clarify something. I, I think I got a little confused around if, if there's an out-of-town tag, regardless of the, where the tag is from, if you are in Birmingham and you collect three Birmingham tickets, on your fourth ticket, you can still have your car towed. And there may be some inefficiencies at first where people can kind of sidestep that. So if they get a new tag, well, maybe they escape the process for a little while. But it, we think we actually over time can close that loophole so that the penalties still follow the owner of the car.
Right. And, and it's only parking violations that apply. So if I get speeding tickets or whatever, that's a totally different scenario.
That's correct. We're only talking about parking violations.
Right. Counselor Tate.
Thank you, Mr. President. Director Fowler, have you guys ever heard of David, Driver's Information Vehicle Database? When I worked in Florida, we used to can look in a system called David, which it, whatever kind of car you drove, if you changed cars, all that information was housed in that system. Because I heard you guys say that you were looking for like some software. So I mean, that's just some software to look into. Because even if I changed cars, my previous car would still be in David with that tag. The tag just, you know, even I got a, a car now, but my tag followed me even though I, I got a different car. So I mean, David, that's the thing that, a system of some software that we used when I worked in Florida. Like as a P O, I can look and put somebody's driver's license in, it could, it'll pull up they, they motor vehicle information. And I could see like what, like if you purchased a car, what type of cars you've driven, if, you know, whatever you had. If, if you had a Porsche some years ago and you driving a Mercedes Benz, I could see, you know, that Porsche out there and that Mercedes Benz. So it's called D A V I D, David, and it's the Driver and Vehicle Information Database. And it's a multi-faceted database that, that, that affords immediate retrieval of driver and motor vehicle information that is indispensable for law enforcement and criminal justice officials.
Yes, ma'am.
So that, that may be a good tool for y'all, David. Because like Madame Protem was saying, if, even if you change cars and you've got a new tag, that old car that you've driven is going to still be in David. And if you got some parking tickets, you can, you can, you can merge that. You can say, oh, you was driving this car, but this, this, you know. So yeah, look into that, David, D A V I D.
So Director Fowler, are you looking for a recommendation from the committee of the whole tonight to move this forward?
That would be nice. Our next step is to, we're actually actively working on drafting a formal ordinance based on this policy, but we definitely wanted to get you guys' feedback as early as possible. But a recommendation would be good. I think that would give us some backing to then do more publicity around this. So we would appreciate that.
Mr. President, I vote that we resoundingly endorse the idea of an ordinance to do this.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I mean, Mr. President, we'll do our best to get the, the changes to the ordinance so we can get it in effect as soon as possible so we can start working on enforcement.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay. Do, do we have any old, newer old business that we need to discuss? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.